Good evening. This is a meeting of the Islam Ad Hoc Committee for Short Term Rentals. It's a regular meeting, and I would like to call the meeting to order, and we can say the pledge allegiance.
Okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one mission under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I see we have no public for public delegations this evening, so you can move on and save time. I would like to say, the chairs are, Gary and I, are very much aware that Yukon Huskies are playing at nine o'clock, so we will move things along, and we have a pretty directed agenda this evening, so I don't think that'll be a problem. Okay. Next item on the agenda is item three, approval of minutes of our last meeting, which was March 18. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes? Gary moved. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second here. The Garrys have put the motion on the table. Any changes, any corrections? Yes.
I have a note, Madam Chair.
Sure.
On page two, under section four dash two, the second paragraph noted that the vast majority of short-term locals exist along the coast. I'm not sure if that should have been rentals.
Okay. Yes.
I think so.
No, I think you're right.
I may have said locals, and that's what you were reflecting what I said, but I think it was rentals.
That's fine.
And then on page five, about halfway down, we're at notes, "I discuss zoning regulations, including challenges of being silent on specific issues." I don't know if it's important to mention long-term or academic on that, but I think I did. I'd just like the record to note that on these short-term rental issues, they now are all the same. Long-term and academic have all of the same issues that we're talking about, right? So I think that's what I was reflecting there.
That's fine. Okay. All right. Anybody else? I think we're good. Okay. All those in favor of approving the minutes as amended, as Mr. Formica has amended?
Aye.
Say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed, any have to abstain? Okay. Very good. All right. So we are onto reports of the co-chairs. Gary, do you have anything this evening that you want to?
No, no, just that it's going to be a short meeting.
Yes, sir. Okay.
And that co-chair Anne Seidfer has done an incredible amount of work. We appreciate it.
Well, likewise here. I mean, think of your opus that we started this whole process with. Okay. Okay, just quickly, I'll talk about one topic, which is the annual meeting of the Federation of Planning and Zoning Agencies. I did go to that dinner, which was on March 28. And I wish I, I wish the whole group could have been there in a way. It was, it was a terrible weather night and a sort of a hassle getting to the aqua turf, but actually worth it, because Attorney Pilasey, who represents Mr. Wibby in, in the Wibby case now pending before the Supreme Court, spoke about short-term rentals, as did Kathy, I'm hoping I'm pronouncing her name correctly, Warizeka, who's the planner for the town of Preston. She spoke first, and I'll just summarize really quickly there. She noted that Preston is literally located between the two casinos. It is quite the place to, for people to come and rent properties for, you know, when they're on vacation. It's a small town, population's well under 5,000, 4,700. They have done everything through zoning, and as you remember, they are on, they're in the midst of a moratorium or a pause, which will be lifted after June of this year. And that was because of this incredible influx of investors buying properties and renting them on a short-term basis. She said that she's, she kind of went through their history of how they even adopted their, their regulations that they're, that are now under moratorium. They're taking this time to really try to study the issue, to really take a look at how they can develop a regulation, and I want to see it, that, that preserves residential, you know, the single-family residential nature of neighborhoods, and at the same time could allow short-term rentals. So let's see what they do. I think we should stay in touch with them. I didn't have a whole lot of time to speak to her, because the meeting was extremely long, and everyone is, you know, waiting to speak to her, et cetera, so, but we will, we'll stay in touch. Attorney Pilasey, very fascinating. He's very positive about the outcome for his client, thinks that there will be clarification. You know, it won't be slam dunk for him, but basically, he just, he focused on this point a couple of times, that he thinks that the short-term rental issue really belongs in zoning, and that towns should either prohibit it, or they should allow it and regulate it. And his recommendation, he had no problem giving, kind of al-sam was free legal advice, was be specific as to your regulations, be specific as to your definition of a short-term rental, and that's, and he pointed to the fact that that was an issue in this, or is an issue in the Wibby case, looking at those, the zoning regulations of the Little Branford community. And he did acknowledge problems with short-term rentals. He thinks the worst problems are these group rentals, the party houses, this kind of thing. And I have to tell you, when I was watching the men's, it was the men's semifinal, you know, basketball, there was an Airbnb, I have to say this, there was an Airbnb advertisement that basically was kind of pushing the whole party thing. It showed four young, it was kind of cartoon-like, but four young people, and, oh, if you, you know, want to save dollars and you're traveling, you've got to do this together, get an Airbnb, and then they show the party lights going on, and every, you know, it was not loud music, but the whole concept was kind of, you know, get together and party. So I'm not saying it's a terrible thing, but I'm just saying it's very interesting that, that they were pushing that in the middle of that basketball game. Okay, so back to Mr. Pilasey. So, yeah, I did have the opportunity, there were questions, so I thought, oh, this is great, I can get some, some information out of him. But I, I asked about, I told him a little bit about Islam's beach communities, and how we have some with zoning, like some that don't have zoning, and that a number of us on this board have been curious about the ones that don't have zoning, and what are their powers to self-regulate? And I know Greg has mentioned it, Dan Beechey has mentioned it, it's come up in a number of contexts that we discussed in the paper, too. Pine Grove has discussed it through Debbie Jett Harris. So he said that basically, it's a little bit of an open-ended question, and you may need to further research it. Generally speaking, bylaws won't cut it, so to speak, in terms of regulation, but you've really got to take a look at what's maybe the structure, or go back in time and in history and see how they were incorporated. So it was a bit of an open-ended answer there, so that was interesting. And that's why I rewrote that once, that little paragraph, I'll come to that later. And then I did ask about zoning versus ordinances. He has no problem with ordinances. He just said, you just, you got to, you got to start with the zoning, got to have that zoning in there. You can always augment with an ordinance, but, you know, he was very zoning-oriented in his regulation, let's say his preferred regulation. So that was, that was interesting. So that was that, and.
Did he talk at all about how he sees the case, how broad or how narrow he sees it?
He didn't, he didn't get to that specific point, although it sounds like he thinks that he'll, he'll be successful on the appeal, his client will be successful, and that perhaps there will just be clarification of some of these issues. And I'm getting the sense from him, and we've discussed it, that there's limitations to those zoning regulations in Branford, and that that is not a desirable way to go. So this may set the, set the stage for, if you're going to regulate, you better define what the short-term rental is and all that, so, but let's, yeah, yeah, so he didn't, yeah, he didn't really get into that point specifically.
Because it seems to me, just reading the summary of the case, that it's a very narrow case about previous language from 1994.
Right. The only, I know Gary agrees with this, but the problem I had with it, with the appellate court decision, was just that it seemed like they were really spending a long time on definitional things, in part because of the holes, let's say, or the lack of specificity in that Branford regulation, but an awful lot of time on that, so I don't know what's going to happen to that on appeal, you know, just don't know, you know, whether we'll just open the gates and there's, there's no time limitations, or there are, if you say there are, you know, I, I'm not sure where it's going to go. But it was very interesting having him speak, so it was, and then I also sat at a table of, you know, zoning officials, other folks, so it was a good conversation just there, and I can share that another time. And so a second thing I was going to talk about, but you can, you can take this point, Gary, because you mentioned it earlier, about pending legislation at the state level. We don't get into it in the, in our status report, although I can throw in more of a sentence or two, I'm hoping that we can discuss it when there's more detail, and if anything is decided at the state level about regulating or helping municipalities to regulate, so, but there are a couple of pending pieces of legislation that we ought to be aware about, so go ahead and jump in.
Yeah, I don't know much about them, but I was reviewing your, your opus here, and you had a line in there about, the state hasn't done anything. So I went and checked on, on the legislative website, and there's three bills, two Senate bills and one House bill, that are currently in the hopper. The one Senate bill, an act requiring a study of the effects of short-term rentals on the housing market of the state, that seems to have gotten some legs, and it is now referred to the Joint Committee on Housing. Let's see, the latest thing was, it's on the Senate calendar as of March 19.
Okay.
Was there a number on that bill?
Yeah, so let's get those bill numbers.
It's 267.
267. And that's the Senate bill, okay.
And then there's another Senate bill, 335, and this authorizes municipalities to adopt ordinances concerning short-term rental properties, and hire consultants to assist in the development of such ordinances. It's from, Martin Looney was a co-sponsor on that.
And that was the subject of, I think, Channel 8, oh, WTNH had a, had a spot.
Which spot did you?
John Salino, you had forwarded that to me, and I'm going to forward that to everyone. It was a little video, a, you know, report about it, right? And that seems to be gathering some steam.
Okay. And, and the third one was introduced by Andre Baumgartner from Groton, and it's an act dedicating a portion of the room occupancy tax on short-term rentals to municipalities.
And that's a House Bill 51?
That's House Bill 5186.
5186, okay.
And I remember the day doing a story on this in one or so.
I think, yeah, it was, it was Mr. Collins, yes.
Or maybe it was Dave Collins' column. So anyway, we might want to make some mention of that.
Yes, I think, I think we'll, now that that's kind, yeah, thanks, thank you very much. I think now that those, those have, you know, come to the forefront, and the session is begun, we can throw in a little bit on that without getting too much in the weeds. But that's all I have on reporting, so with that, we'll head to item five on the agenda. Thanks for this, Gary. And this is basically discussion and, and any, anything you'd like on this, the draft report, and, you know, I think if, I'm hoping in the email that I did give a little detail on what sections were added, what was maybe changed. I didn't want to start using five colors of ink, because that gets a little, a little complicated. So, yeah, maybe I'll just have a sentence or two on what was added, you know, so pages seven to eight, that, paragraph two of subsection C there.
Where am I?
Okay, I'm on page seven, the bottom, the bottom of page seven.
Yep, subsection C.
And that whole topic concerns, you know, the private deed restrictions, bylaws, homeowners' association bylaws, and then these bylaws that, that the beach communities adopt themselves. So I revised this second paragraph, that goes from page seven to the beginning of page eight, just a bit, to reflect the fact that we need a little bit broader discussion in the future, if it's something that Attorney Zamark is going to research more. I had a very brief email exchange with him on the topic, so, you know, it wasn't something researched, and it wasn't something where I asked a detailed questions, but, so, but I did want to reflect the fact that it seems still a little open-ended, and if it's not open-ended, we should just make sure that we know precisely what that authority is. So that was, that was done in that section. Then, section five, public opinion. Gary sent me the larger version of what you see, I just shrunk it a little bit, but I kept the same formatting and just, yeah, consolidated it a bit. So, and this is also a sort of, shrunk it, right, well, it is a shrunken version of your larger report that you had given, which was, you know, sort of gave the, the point, counterpoint to everything, so I kind of kept it, kept that same, you know, style to it, I guess, if you will. But that was, I thought it was, you know, thanks, Gary, I thought it was a good summary of all of the public opinion, and we had so much of it with the two public hearings, all of the emails we got, all of the public, every single meeting had a public delegation, so, a lot there. Section six, based on Paul Formica's information and opinion from the beach community officials. So I put that together from what Paul said, the meeting minutes, my, a little bit my own conversation with Debbie Jett Harris, which, again, points to this issue of autonomy of the, of the beach communities. So don't want to leave that out, because I think it needs to be addressed one way or another, so, and then, so those are those two sections. And then we go on to the section 10, which just had, you kept the same, all the same stuff in section 10, just added the Stonington experience. So you'll find that, I believe Stonington is on page 18, the very top of page 18, and I just went back to the day, I went to the Westerly Sun. There was a great article in the Westerly Sun, too, I, a couple of, it was quite a bit of good coverage there as well, besides the day, so I thought, you know, spread it around a little, so I threw that article in there, too, but, for reference. But every, they all agreed, the two newspapers agreed on what was happening. But I feel like that's a cautionary tale when you read about Stonington, you know, how the, they had spent so much time on this ordinance, and yet, and, and really engaged the community, and yet somehow it just missed the mark, and it missed the mark for, for, like, opposing groups. So one to sort of think about a little bit, you know. You can actually easily, I think it's in, I think the Westerly Sun article, if you go, if you look online for that one, you can click on the actual ordinance itself, too, so you can see what it looks like, if that was necessary. So section 11 is our conclusion, our thoughts and conclusions. I know we're not coming to final, you know, recommendations at this point, but many of you sent me your thoughts, your feeling of what we should recommend, so this is a compilation of that. And I think we're kind of on the same page, you know, I didn't, I didn't find really conflicting or opposing, you know, opposite thoughts. I, there were different thoughts, different emphasis, but definitely very similar. And the, I think on the top of page 19, what we tried to do there is say what the Board of Selectmen can begin to do, and what we, what we recommend as a starting place, and what we've thought all along, is certainly we can clean up this noise and parking ordinance situation, I think we can, that's, that's mentioned in there. And then I had this thought after reading your things, your suggestions, and that really the Selectmen should share the report directly and ASAP with zoning, because I think that's going to come to pass, if it's going to happen, something will happen in zoning. So the sooner there's the sharing of this updated information, and what other towns are doing, and what our situation is, the better, you know? So that's where that came from.
Yeah, it seems like at least every town I researched, all the administration happens through zoning.
Yes.
All, all the permitting, all the enforcement, all of that is in zoning.
Yeah, Boswell was like the only town that I could find that was pure ordinance, that actually passed and is actually operative. Stonington was the experiment that failed, we'll say. Simsbury looks like an ordinance, and you just think it's an ordinance, but you go to the zoning regs, and it's all supported in there.
Right.
The definition, that you have to go through, you know, you have, you know, you've got to be permitted, but it all comes basically through zoning, because they tell you where you need a special permit, where you don't. So, yeah, so zoning is obviously key. And I did, you know, I think we can safely say that, at this point, where we're leaning, and I did put that in there, I didn't want to, you know, it, we've said it in open meeting, it's not a secret, you know, what direction we think we're, we're headed, doesn't mean that's going to be it, if we have some, you know, some unusual decision by the Supreme Court in Connecticut, but, so, so that's where we're at.
Did, Anne, did?
Yes.
The attorney who represented Wibby?
Yes.
Did he talk about the appellate court's decision, discussion about short-term rentals as a commercial endeavor?
No, and I, we were trying to, there were a couple of us in the audience, after asking my questions, that there was, there were people, I was sitting with, that wanted to ask that question, because everyone feels like that is what's missing, is that, and I think somewhere in the paper, we mentioned that as well, you know, that will the, will Wibby address the issue of the business aspect of short-term rentals, and, you know, businesses, you know, operating in primarily residential, you know, residential zones, so, unfortunately, yeah, he didn't really get into that. And I think, his opinion, I think, is that, I think I wrote that in here, too, somewhere, was that, but he, he has no problem with short-term rentals in single-family residential districts. He was, that's his view.
That's his client.
Right. So he's, yeah, so he has no problem with that, so, but he didn't get into that whole, the whole, yeah, the business aspect, and, which is what bothers people on a sort of intellectual level, right, and a zoning level.
It seems to bother some of the people, comment, who commented to us.
Yes.
The, the commercial, is it a commercial use or not?
Yeah, definitely. That was very evident in the information that you provided in section five, yeah, the, absolutely, that's definitely at the heart of it, so we'll see what they do with that. In section 12, this, these selected documents are based on Greg McIntyre's suggestions. I did links directly where I could, but, you know, that's fine. But these were a good sort of, beside the many exhibits at the end of this paper, these I thought were good choices, Greg, because they covered, just covered some topics that you need to kind of get on board with, which is, you know, understanding how, how we have room occupancy taxes on these operations, and the article from San Antonio, right, the article there, and the Harvard, the Harvard Business Review article, and of course, the COGS, our white paper, and, yeah, and even going back, I like this one going back in time. It's from 2018, and it's from the Office of Legislative Research, but it was good, because it kind of gets you on board very quickly, the little list there. So, yeah, I think we've, we've kind of got to, today I did send, I sent Brooke the PDFs of each of the, of the attachments, the exhibits, and, yeah, so pretty much there's, there are things that we, that were in Gary's bundle of information, or they were articles that we passed out during meetings, before meetings, before meetings, just a couple of additions because of topics we covered, like Stonington, we had to make sure we went back in the archives and looked at that. And, yeah, because we've, we've had a lot of these things already, we had zoning, we had Lyme's regulations in your, your materials, so nothing really new for any of us here. And of course, we added our own comparison chart that you guys worked on, so that's good. Yeah. Look at that, you have, you have.
Nothing but net.
That's great. You created a, created something that will be published elsewhere, maybe.
Should you bring me gold stars for this? I'm thinking someone's looking for them.
But anyway, so, but that's, I mean, so definitely, let's get something in here about pending legislation, so that's one thing.
Now, I don't think that the legislation issues anything new.
Yeah.
The state legislature's been addressing, at least when I researched in the beginning of this project, they've been addressing this issue many, many, many times, so this just seems to be yet another attempt to do something.
Right, right.
They will, they will have the, the same issues that we're hearing. There'll be, there'll be legislators in favor of doing some regulations, because they have a problem, there'll be legislators that are in favor of just simple recordings, perhaps, of short-term rental, and not much more than that, I think.
Right.
And I think some of these bills, when you refer a bill, sometimes you're sending it into no man's land, and, so my suggestion would be not to include any specific legislation in this. You could refer the fact that the legislature's looking at it, but the, the session is going to be over in a few weeks.
Right.
Yeah.
So we'd be able to add legislation specific to whatever happens.
Right.
Bills that get referred sometimes end up with a paragraph or two as an addition or amendment to other bills in, in housing, so they may, you know, so we'll be able to look at that, I think, a little more carefully with that, before we recommend something to the Board of Selectmen.
Okay, okay.
When you have time, I have some conversations about that, I don't know where you want to go with this conversation today, but.
So about that particular issue?
No, about the, the report.
Oh, about the report. Well, yeah, this is, this would be a good time to.
Yeah, no, when you're, when you're done.
Yeah, I think I am, yeah. I have time.
Oh.
So go, you go ahead.
Well, I, I thought you did a great job in with the summarizing all of the stuff that we did, and whoever put it in, there's certainly a lot of work in here that saved us from a lot of work that you took on, so, so thank you for that. I have talked about the income expense report, I did bring, I got a copy the other day, well in advance of the due date from the assessor, to make sure that we fill this out on my long-term rentals. So I brought it in, it's blank, I didn't fill it out, but I don't know if you want to just kind of look through it, I, I need to have this back and fill it out, but.
Right, that's actually, I think it's one of the, one of the.
I think it might be there, but I don't know if anybody really looked at it, so people want to look at that, that's fine.
This is the one that's, yes, yeah.
Some, some of the items, I thought, as you discussed, I thought you leaned a little bit toward being anti-short-term rental, and I don't know if that was me and my approach to this issue, but I think some of the conversations could be more, could be more centered, if you don't mind, I'd just like to go through a couple of the, the ones that, that I had. The first paragraph in section one, to determine whether, to what extent, short-term rentals may be regulated, any other related issues? Any other related issues, I think we're talking about noise and parking and.
So where, what page are you on?
Section one, page one.
Page, section one, one.
Right at the top.
Okay, oh, right here, okay.
Right. The third line up from that paragraph says, "Any other related issues?"
Okay.
I thought we should talk about the. Yeah, I thought we should talk about the enforcement and support and awareness of existing regulations and laws. There was some conversation about approaching the police commission and asking for parking, uh, signs, no parking signs or park here signs or, or whatever, uh, and then some of the other stuff. I, I think we ought to, noise, for example, I think we ought to say that there is a statute and, and there governs it. And I thought that might be a good place to do it and just say, you know, we encourage enforcement of existing regulations, so-
Yeah, the, I, I mean, I, I, I think- So-
You did note it on page 19.
Yeah, well, that, well, also, I mean, there's a whole section, yeah, there's a whole section on, on noise and a whole section on parking and, and then what to do with it. But I think the only reason, I tell you, that top, that first paragraph was more to just, um-
Tee it up.
Tee it up because this is our charge. It doesn't mean that we're not kind of adding a little to our charge or, you know, or, you know, looking into, and part of the charge is to also find out what does exist. So it was more just, uh, yeah, it was a tee-up. I, it wasn't, um, this isn't exclusive of the issue at all. I guess that's the point there.
Yeah, no, it says, "Any other related issues," which is somewhat ambiguous.
But that's the, but that's the language of the Board of Selectmen in their charge to us. It wasn't, it's not us saying this is what we want to do.
We're going to be here all night if we debate each client. Or you can listen to me and say you don't agree, that's okay.
No, no, the substance of what you're saying is legit. It's, it's just the location of where you want to make the edit. This is just kind of an inch, well, she's just using the language of the charge, but the substance of what you're saying is, is legit and I think it's in here already, yes?
I, I tend to agree with you, but go on, so, so-
Next one.
Yeah, next one, we'll go on.
The, uh, section two, um, section two A regarding definitions.
Yes.
Um, it, it does talk about, um, uh, definitions set forth in state statutes. Um, you know, I, I know that somewhere in here it almost gives the definition for Black Point, but Giant's Neck Beach has a definition in their draft updates, um, that I can just read to you. You can insert it or not. "Short-term rental means the use of a dwelling unit or portion thereof that is offered or provided to a transient guest by a short-term rental owner or operator for a fee." That's word for word, I think, what Black Point has, commonly referred to as vacation rentals. So I just think that commonly referred to as vacation rentals is important to have in this document somewhere because that, I think, identifies decades of use here. So whether you want to add that or not, but it, it, you know, this is my-
Where do you want to add it, Paul?
My opinion.
Where, where would you like to add it?
Well, we're talking about definitions here, um, whether that can be incorporated in this. Um, I, I-
So-
I don't know where Black Point was-
It's actually, both, both definitions are also given, but they're given in a different place. So this was kind of the, this was the sort of general definition. And, and then the third paragraph tells you that, um, certain of our beach communities have expressed a differing view, and those differing views come up as they, I, I thought in certain places where they fit. So, um, they, they are definitely there. The Black Point definition is there. The, um, the, um, Oak Grove definition, uh, although not, although in a bylaw, is also in there. Um, and other, other definitions are given from other towns too, but that's a different topic. But I, I, yeah, I, I see your point, it's just that it-
I'm, I'm just making some points here.
That's fine.
Just put them wherever you like.
I think Paul's making a good point here, but perhaps maybe a parenthetical-
Okay.
Uh, beach communities addressed later in this report.
Yeah, so, so, yeah, that's a way of solving the issue, for sure. I just wanted to note that they were in there, that's all I'm saying. So, okay, so we'll do that on page two.
You know, the committee is also aware, however, that certain of our beach communities expressed a different view, that's in that section there.
Right, so I think-
That's, that's why I brought it there.
Paragraph three, okay, so we'll add to that.
Just, uh, parenthetically.
Yes, because I do that sometimes when I talk about things said.
Right.
Yeah, I, I tend to say things said, but I should say things down the pike, okay.
In section B where it says Granicus statistics, less than 10% of short-term rentals voluntarily get registered, I think you brought that up or somebody, I, I forget who, where that came from. Where did that actually refer to? Is that 10% of the world or-
That was Granicus.
10% of the world, 10% of one community, 10% of-
That was not particularly specific, but it was, um, that was the, that was the data that they, that they gave to me.
I, I've seen that in numerous articles. I, I never, I didn't print every article I read. Yeah, right, yeah, you did, you did say Granicus, right.
Yeah, I just didn't know, we've quoted a lot of different communities in this and talked about a lot of different- I didn't know if it was 10% of New Haven, 10% of Connecticut, 10% of the world, you know?
I don't think it's necessarily worldwide, but I think at least within the domestic US. I think that's, that's where that, I've gotten sense of that because when they, it came out of a lecture and meeting where they were talking about US, um, it's the US experience in cities and towns within the United States. So that's there, and when they, when they help communities to formulate, that's the, that's the number they, they, you know, work with, so to speak, so, um-
All right, and again, I just, I don't like throwing stuff out there in reports that we can't back up.
Do you think it's a better idea, instead of putting 10%, maybe we can get rid of the number and put-
A lower percentage, a small percentage.
Just, right, less than a majority or something, as opposed to being, you know, a, a, a particular number so we don't get called on, that's a good point.
Yeah.
Well, the other thing too is, in a paper like this, it's very hard, I agree, um, it's very hard to have a, um, a reference for every single point you made. And so what I tried to do, just so you know, is, um, I tried to have internal conversation here where you could go and look it up quickly and it wasn't a hassle, or attach an exhibit. So if I had to attach an exhibit for everything, it would have been like four or five times the number exhibits.
Is Granicus on here?
Granicus is not, is not an exhibit here, but I do, I do, um, talk about their, their consultation with us, um, you know, I did not, I did not add them.
Isn't a Granicus report listed as a meeting?
Yes.
It's an exhibit.
So, I mean, they could find the 10% if they look up Granicus, right. Again, just my opinion.
You could change it to a-
If you feel like it's necess- you know, it's okay to change, it's okay with me, but if-
Or I can add an exhibit, in which case I must, I will, I will have, I was hoping not to because, but, yeah. But, um, yeah, so, um-
So then page three, that it talks about benefits and burdens.
Sure, okay, so we're on page, what are we on now?
Page three, second paragraph down, "The local economy may also benefit, and new customers may patronize shops." I mean, I think that, that's a given that they do do that. I, I don't know that that's a may. I mean, they come here and they, and, and they do come to downtown Lianic, they do go to Midway Mall, they do go to Flanders, they do go, you know, they go everywhere, you know, so, um-
You know-
That's, that's more of a shall to me than a may, you know, if you're going to do that, so-
It just benefits the local economy.
Yeah, yeah, I, I think-
That's, that's legit.
Okay, so, um, okay. Okay, so you would want that, say, page three.
You have another may on that sentence too, you can drop on.
Okay, so I'll get rid of the mayes.
Change it to a might.
I mean, in, in paragraph three, you, you, you talk about usually not connected to the community. I mean, I guess that's, that's about right, although there was a lot of testimony about people that come and back and visit.
Right, so, yeah, and that just, so, this, the, correct. So I, these two paragraphs are just meant to be the, the basic summary of benefits and burdens that you see repeatedly in their literature. And, and then when, um, in Gary's section five-
All right, so where I'm, where I'm going, not to interrupt, but where, I just don't want to be here all night.
Okay.
Where the cha- the, the last line in section three is, "This change can be made worse by excessive noise and traffic as well as parking and trash problems, all health and safety issues that continue to be common where short-term rentals operate." I, I mean, I, I think that's a statement that is a little, a little much. I don't think it's common that there is, I think there, there's a percentage of short-term rentals that have issues with trash, that have issues with parking, but I don't think it's a common issue. I don't think we heard that out here. I think it may be common with one home or two homes or three homes, but it's not common where short-term, you know, rentals operate, I don't think. So I, I just take exception to that, um, and then-
What if we just say, "All health and safety issues that continue," and get rid of "to be common" for a short-term rental?
You could say that "continue to be common where rentals exist." I mean, I have long-term rentals that have more problems with me than any short-term rental that I have, so-
You know, you keep bringing up long-term rentals, that's not our issue. The issue's short-term transient people.
It, no, it is our issue because it's treated exactly the same way in the zoning regulations and it's treated the exact way, um, as, as any other thing. Long-term rentals are not permitted in the zoning regulation? They're not listed, they're not, they're not-
Currently not permitted.
At least when I read it, I didn't find any mention of show, of long-term rentals or academic rentals.
And when I asked about that, I was just taught historically it, they had never been an issue. It's just when the Airbnbs came up.
But they're not listed.
I know, it should be clarified, I think.
So therefore, as a permissive regulation, they're not allowed.
No, that, we, we had this discussion, one second. We had the discussion that being able to rent one's property is one of the constitutional rights people have with their property. So you don't have to say it if it's a constitutional right. The question becomes, this whole issue is, how short of a period of time is the court going to say is constitutional? Is it 30 days, 7 days, maybe if it's in a fund, 2 hours, I don't know.
But I agree.
But the fact, the fact is that we are in the same space though. Until the Supreme Court rules on that particular issue.
No.
We are in the same space. Long-term rentals are not mentioned in the regulations as, by, short-term rentals. So you can't say that one is permissive and one is not.
They don't have to be because long-term rental, the ability to rent one's property is a constitutional right, so you don't have to say it.
Then why are we here?
Because it's short-term rentals is the issue.
It's the ability to rent one's property is a constitutional right.
And that's why our court is looking up this thing, that's the whole issue. I don't have any answer.
And that's my point. So until that time, I don't think we can make these generic conversations that can made worse by excessive noise or traffic is, that are, continue to be common where short-term rentals are. In Giant's Neck Beach, for example, we don't have common issues of trash and others. So I just think that that's an overreach, so-
It's a simple might, the, 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 the tenor of this is to, to fit with the generic understanding that you see in the literature. It's not us making a judgment without East Line here. These paragraphs don't necessarily, they're not, they're not necessarily based-
You're making a judgment when you say "continue to be common."
But that's, that's not-
It doesn't say according to-
But, but I can, I can change the language.
You can get rid of that common.
No, no, you can get rid of that. You go to, you go to the next paragraph, you do it again, "Where problems short-term rentals often present." "The number of guest rentals exceed occupancy limits." You can, you can go to a long-term rental in Monville and have 30 people living in one of those houses there.
So I, I can-
I would suggest there's more opportunity for people that exceed occupancy limits for long-term rentals than there is in short-term rentals. But, you know, you could say a problem that rentals exist, but maybe not short-term rentals. It doesn't, doesn't, not everybody has that problem.
We did not investigate the propriety of long-term rentals. We had no testimony on problems of long, that's not our charge.
No, I know, but our charge is not to say that number of guest rentals exceed occupancy. We didn't hear that it often occurs, we heard that occasionally occurs.
Well, we used the word occasionally.
Huh?
Well, we used the word occasionally, you just said, you know?
But this says often, I mean, that's all, I just-
No, I, I, I understand, but I think if you go to the first sentences of this section C, which are at the very top of page three, that tells you what the ensuing conversation is, which is, and I can adjust it to be more soft, less, less harsh, whatever, that's not a problem, but just pointing out that this isn't East Line specific. This is just this, in this universe of short-term rentals, there are researchers and observers. They, they are very much in agreement on what are the benefits, what are the burdens? And we heard similar commentary from public opinion, not necessarily identical, which you can look at in section five. But that's what's happening in the first sentences, the first four lines at the top of page three. And this is, this is a summary meant to just tell you what those are, not that they are necessarily directed to East Line.
Right, but, for example, we can change-
You are, you are putting this in a report that you're going to give to the Board of Selectmen that's going to be public, this is going to be public.
It, it's fine.
It's public now. I'm just saying, it's an opinion that, that I don't think shared by everybody on, on this and I don't think it's correct.
Point taken. How about, how about on that last sentence, we say, "The risks are increased where the number of guests in rentals exceeds occupancy limits. A problem short-term rentals may present."
Yeah, that's fine, we can, we can adjust, yes.
Is that okay?
We can adjust.
Or you can eliminate, you, you can eliminate the last, "A problem short-term rentals often present." You don't need that phrase. You can say, "The risk are increased where the number of guests in rentals exceed occupancy limits." I mean, that, that's an easy enough two, but whatever, I can be-
All right.
What's your next one?
Okay, so, so, I, I will, you can adjust this, just, I just wanted to remind the readers that this section, again, is meant to be generic, it, you know, it's, but I can definitely be sure that it, it stays content neutral, so let's go move on.
I, I'd like to make one comment on that. The, I, I think what Paul is, you know, trying to say is, I mean, this commission was started because we have a, you know, a small group of, um, of complaints. And to, to take, and I think what Paul is trying to say is that that doesn't put a broad brush over the entire industry. And we do know that, you know, that, you know, because of, you mentioned it too, the advertising on TV, they're advertising these places as great party spots, but that's not the entire industry. I think that's what Paul's trying to say, don't put a broad brush on everything. And, you know, so it's just, it is one aspect of it, that's why we're here. But it's, it is, it is one aspect of a industry that, you know, is not totally, um, exacerbated to the negative.
Yeah, I would also say that I saw an Airbnb commercial on the same programs, basketball programs, that show a couple having to turn out the lights when their five-year-old or 10-year-old, whatever the child was, wanted to go to bed because there was no place to go in a hotel room. And then it opened up into an Airbnb that said, "You won't have to do that." You know, the kid could go to sleep and you could watch TV, so, um, so, you know, I think it depends on how you want to present it. And I thank John for the, for the clarification, you know? But I'll just go through the rest of them quickly.
Sure, okay, no, that's fine.
You can do what, you know, whatever, and if I don't like it at the end, I'll, I'll vote against it at the end, that's all. Um, "A number of platforms are represented on page four, the second paragraph, 123 rental units." You know, we're listing, um, a, a larger number, that 171 internet listed for 123 units. I don't know, I think there's 8,000 or so homes in, in, in Connecticut, but, um, but anyway, we talked about numbers in the 200 range and there's really 123.
So the 200 comes from multiple internet listings?
Yeah.
Just the homes?
Yep, yep, so-
And it, and it was a seasonal, um, calculation by Granicus because they thought that was under numbering, if you will, um, because it was in February, I believe, when they did that little snapshot, so-
What's, I'm sorry, what's the issue with the 123?
It, it doesn't matter what the issue is, no, it's fine.
You think it's inaccurate, meaning it's too hu- too high?
No, I said our conversations existed around the number 200. And perhaps I misunderstood Greg's number in the amount of rental units is 123.
Okay, all right.
That's all, I was making a point.
Yeah, I mean, the, the original assessment I made was, well, I didn't make an assessment of the actual houses. I looked at the number of internet listings.
Yes.
Only on two sites, and had, and that's where my estimate of the 175 came from. And so it makes sense that if the- And so it makes sense that if the places are multiply listed, then it's going to be fewer than that one-seventy-five in terms of the actual homes that are up for rent.
And I, I think we, yeah, we kind of covered that in the preceding paragraph to that.
So, I just brought that up as a discrepancy of the conversation, that's generally been centered around the number two-hundred, if that's what I've remembered here coming to these meetings that we have, and it's, it's really a hundred and twenty-three.
I'm just.
So I may have misunderstood Greg's point, but I think at the bottom of that paragraph, where the town chooses to amend zoning regulations to allow and address short-term rentals, it could consider expanding the regulation of bed and breakfast operations as a starting point, or adding a definition of short-term rentals. I think that would be a simple addition to the bottom of that paragraph. The next, second paragraph down from that talks about the Black Point Beach Club, is that what it is? The Black Point Beach Club or Beach Association?
Black Point Beach Club Association.
Club Association, yeah.
Both.
Yeah. I didn't think that that was the full thing, but, but anyway, that, that is where I thought that might be a place to put that other definition as well. And then you go down to ordinances on B, as discussed previously, noise and parking issues are generally associated with short-term rentals. I mean, I, I think that's a statement that I, I don't think is a fair statement either. I mean, I think there have been some houses where, sure, there have been noise and parking issues, and that's part of what we're here, but to say they're generally associated with short-term rentals, I think is giving the wrong impression on, on the whole thing. And this has been happening for decades, people have been coming in vacation homes here, and, so.
Yeah, that language can be adjusted.
You know, I think it refers to, on the next page, page six, Eastline Police Chief Finkelstein, Stein talked to us about, he, he said there was no, he, he didn't receive any complaints about short-term rentals. He said zero.
Well, I think what he said was, he doesn't know whether the complaints of short-term rentals are regular houses.
Correct, that's correct.
Because he has no way of knowing whether it's a short-term rental or just a regular house.
Absolutely.
Right.
I think that's a little naive on his part, but nonetheless, that's what he told us.
So that, you can't generally say that it's a, it's a problem associated with just short-term rentals, huh?
Correct.
So that's, that's, that's really only my point. I'm just trying to have a fair, and, and we're, you know, we're supposed to be, we're supposed to be providing recommendations and information to the Board of Selectmen for their consideration. So I just think we should do it in a way that's not biased in some of these ways that we're presenting it. In other ways, it's clearly one way or the other, and we have to, we have to announce that fact, but, but I think some of this stuff just goes a little, a little too far. But, on page eight, section four. On the bottom paragraph, it said it would be helpful if the court would direct, directly address the commercial as compared to residential use of property by short-term owners, you know, whatever is decided. I think the impact, to some extent, the validity of short-term rental, I think that has to do with the time, and I know that, you know, Gary, you're telling me I can't say long-term rentals on this because that wasn't our charge, I, I think year-round or academic rentals apply to that, and, you know, I think that's something that's going to come out of this. Somebody's going to have to address it, you know, one way or the other, if, if they're not listed, whether they're by right constitutionally or not. The zoning, if we're going to deal with it in zoning, we're going to have to, we're going to have to insert some definition somewhere, and that was in the minutes of March eighteenth, I suggested certain places in the zoning regulations where that's what we should recommend to the Board of Selectmen, and that's, or into the zoning commission, not doing their jobs, but we can say, "We think this ought to go here, and it might fit, it might be an easy fix." I think that's easy for us to do.
Yeah, I think once they decide, that will be easier for us.
So on page nine, public opinion, you talked about this a little bit in your talk, you had, you know, arguments in favor, and then you list counterpoints in, in all of that, and then you talk about, you know, inflated pricing for, for all of that. I'm, I'm not sure if, I don't know, I'm not sure if, maybe I'm getting too much in the weeds here, but I'm not sure the prices would be inflated for that, I think it's more market, market-driven, you know?
What are, are you talking about the price of the house or the price of the rental?
Price of the house.
Well, I can speak from experience in over a beach, that the price of the houses has skyrocketed in the last three years, by factors of five or more.
Yes.
And most of that is due to pressure of short-term rentals.
Which could be the location.
Could be, I like to think so, but on the other hand.
Location can change, though.
Remember, too, this is the opinion section, so, but I think, I think people who can hear speak it.
I'm just sharing mine.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, the other thing, that short-term rentals, the commercial use of residential homes, you know, I mean, I think, I think you're, you're listing this as things that people have said, right? This is not our opinion, right?
Correct, these, the arguments.
Things that people have said.
They're listed as arguments against short-term rentals, just as, as we had arguments in favor of them.
Yeah, there's no editorial counterpoints in this part, too.
I had some, and then I told Ed, I think I was overzealous.
Yeah, I did notice that, but I, but Gary didn't provide them, and, and none of them were so, you know, I mean, it just seemed like it was, yeah, it wasn't maybe necessary, but.
I think this section captured very well what we heard in public discussion.
Yeah, I think Gary did a great job with that.
It covered the universe, people who were for it, people who were against it.
Yeah, we had the, yeah, the folks who were, who had, you know, legacy homes and, you know, had been in their family, they spoke, so I think we captured that pretty decently.
I think maybe you should, maybe make it a tad clearer when you get down to the arguments in favor of short-term and arguments, you know, against it. You might just put, these are the arguments, these aren't the committee's opinion, these are the arguments of the public.
Good for them.
And I think that would.
Yeah, that's.
I mean, I can emphasize that.
Public, yeah.
I can emphasize that in the, somewhere in the beginning of section five, I can emphasize that, in those, in those two paragraphs, you know, somewhere. And it says, "Public opinion in town to date." I mean, it's, and it says, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
So, but I can, I can just emphasize it physically more.
You've seen it right here.
I know.
As, as we have obtained considerable public opinion, it will be summarized here. I mean, that's.
Yeah.
But it's a heading, and headings, headings should not be, the heading should be clear.
Yeah, it's fine, I mean, section five, the heading is, well, we can do.
The subheading can be clearer.
The subheading will add to that, so let's add to the subheading.
If, if anything occurs from my comments tonight, it would be hopefully that we take another look at this in perhaps a different direction than what we're looking at it, you know, and I, I think it's an excellent job, I'm not criticizing what it is, just some of these.
Yeah, right.
Little, little things, this may not be necessary in a report that's supposed to be, I think somewhat unbiased, right? I think that's what we're going to present to them. We're not, we're not recommending, at this point, any elimination or banning or any, you know, we might recommend, at the end of the day, a registry, perhaps a fee structure, I think you mentioned, you know, both of those in the thing.
This is a summary.
Huh?
This is a summary.
Yeah.
That's all.
Yeah, so, anyway, that, that's what bugged me, so that's what I'm sharing, and I apologize if I've offended anybody, but.
You've offended no one.
I'll take a, I'll take a little offense, because, since I'm the, since I was the author, there was no intention to have any bias in here, and many times, I'm presenting information based upon the mouth from which it is coming, so if it is coming from the public, it's the public's, if it's coming from researchers, it's their analysis, but I can, I will make sure that there's never a doubt, so I will take that under advisement, and I will go forth, but that's.
Well, I'm sorry you took offense, that wasn't my point, I was just trying to bring out discrepancies that I thought in a report that we're going to present to the public and the Board of Selectmen.
Okay, so, point, point taken, I just think to say that there are biases is, is going over the top, so that's my opinion, so. Okay, all right, well, moving on, anybody else? And do you have anything else to add to?
No, mostly what I sent you, I just.
Thank you very much, yeah.
I think it's so important to send this report to all the zoning members, because we may agree on something, the Board of Selectmen may agree, but when it comes down to it, it's the vote of at least four zoning members that would change the regulations, so it's just imperative that they be kind of included in this, you know, getting this report.
Getting them going, so to speak. Right, okay, yeah, that, but you, you, you know, what you wrote started to make me think, yeah, that, that, and you want to, you want to be operating with departments, you know, sharing information, and boards and commissions sharing information, so.
Right now, I think everything's just kind of waiting to see.
I know.
What happens with the trial with the zoning, this report, and I don't think zoning's going to look at anything immediately.
Right, yeah, right. But to just be in the loop, direct, directly in the loop, I guess. And that's up to the Board of Selectmen, this is us, you know, staying in our, we're staying in our lane as a, as a committee, we're good at doing that, so we do the report, we give it to the Board of Selectmen with the recommendation that, you know, this might be the time to.
Share.
Hand this, share this information rather than waiting another hunk of time, so, okay. Anybody else, the other into the table? Any other thoughts? Okay, so, well, I will go ahead and make some, some of those changes, I will also, once Brooke and I go over the exhibits and what is done there, I will also share those in actuality with you, I mean, again, about seventy-five percent of them, you've, or eighty percent you've already seen in one context or another, there might be an occasional media article that you may have missed, but that is exhibited here in the exhibits. Okay, so, should we schedule a delivery time to, to give this to the Board of Selectmen? We would be on item six at the moment on the agenda. And so schedule a delivery date, and then a potential presentation time, because, you know, the Board of Selectmen typically, you know, they meet first, first and third Wednesdays, so, obviously seventeen.
First and third Wednesdays?
Yes, so.
It's a Wednesday, huh?
So, unless they have special meetings, but that's their, that's their designated day. So, like seventeenth of April's coming up, I think that's too soon, I mean, I, I was thinking, I was thinking maybe a present, a physical presentation, like we're act, we go as our, as the committee to them on May first, if that works with their schedule, we can ask them that, and then, what we could do is just before that time, at least a good ten-day, ten days at least before that or longer, to make sure that they have the report in hand, because that would be very important to have, for them to have read it, and then, so they can ask appropriate questions, you know, because I, you know, even though we'll do a little presentation, I think they need to sink their teeth into this, so the questions. And they asked quite a few questions when you and I did that preliminary thing, so that was helpful.
Sweet, I'm sorry, you're thinking?
I'm thinking May first, maybe.
To deliver it to them?
No, for, maybe May first to just ask them if we can go do a presentation then. That's Wednesday, May one? I don't think these corrections, you know, are going to take me too, too long, so.
That's fine, May first.
So, May first, we could ask, at least find that out, about that, and then work backwards once we know that, if that's okay, we could just find, you know, figure, okay, maybe by, you know, ten days before that, two weeks preferably, that they have the, the physical document. It will be given to them by email also, probably, but the physical document, you know, would be helpful. And I was thinking, I know we're not going to go big league here, but we could definitely have some kind of a folder where there's the, the actual body of the document, and then the exhibits, just, you know, they don't need to have like budget book type of stuff, but, you know, in terms of hardcover, but something that makes it easy to, to flip through.
So, I'm sorry, I don't understand, you, you're going to ask to be on that May first agenda to present the report?
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm asking all of you, do you think that, May first, for, for all of us, and I would, I would hope that everyone can attend that meeting, and present, present a section of the report?
I cannot attend that, I have another meeting that night, so I can't attend that night if you want everybody there, that's.
Yeah, let's see, so then if we, if it's not May first, it might have to be.
Do we, do we need everyone? Yeah, just, I'll be in May, on May first.
What's that?
So I'll be in May, on May first.
Oh, okay, so we should try for the next Board of Selectmen meeting in the month of May, do you think?
The fifteenth?
I think it's the fifteenth, someone check that.
Fifteenth, eighth of fifteen. Oh, I'm sorry, fifteenth, yeah, you said the first or the third.
Right, do I have the right dates?
Fifteen.
Yeah, the fifteenth, is that?
Let me see.
That works. Are you out of town?
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, you may have to go without me, so.
We can revoke your passport.
Yeah.
It may be a benefit if I'm not here.
Does, does anyone want to present? I mean, does everyone have a burning desire to present? Or do you want us to present, or, I mean, I can present? How do, how do we, how do people want to do it?
I'm fine with the two co-chairmans.
Okay, anyone, how about Gary?
I'm, I'm fine with the two, yeah.
Okay, Paul, you seem like you're busy.
Listen, I have no problem you presenting it, it would have been.
That's fine.
I, I would have liked to have sat there and listened to the presentation as you go to the Board of Selectmen, engage their, their reception of it.
Right, right.
You know, but other than, other than my comments this evening, I, I don't want to risk further insulting anyone else here, you know, so I, I.
It's history now, Paul, you can, you can move forward.
I think Roseanne will keep you in place, so.
Roseanne better want great with Roseanne.
So, how about you guys, you want to participate, or you want to leave it up to us to do this?
Yeah, because I actually enjoy that, because I've done these things before, and I, when I did the ARPA presentation, I, you know, I, not everyone wanted to present, but those that did, and it was kind of a, it was sort of refreshing, different, you know, for, for those people that, you know, had a certain interest in a section of the report to do that, so feel free to jump up.
I'm not a good thespian, so that's okay.
As Brooke knows.
Who's on too long?
So Anne and I will do it, we'll give ourselves.
We'll split it up.
We'll split it up.
And, and, and we can just do highlighting, because.
A hundred percent, yeah.
A hundred percent, because.
We'll keep it short.
They're going to have, have the opportunity to read the report ahead, they've already listened to us in a preliminary presentation, right, an update, so they had a lot of questions answered that night, so.
Right.
Okay.
All right, essentially.
So then what date are we looking at, then?
It could be any time.
Well, it could be either the first or the fifteenth.
We should just ask them, too, because depending on what's on their plate, right, and their agenda, okay, that's fine.
Yeah, I'm with Paul, I mean, I would need to be here, so first or fifteenth of May would be fine.
Okay, okay, that's great. And then, all right, so we'll do, we'll just work backwards, and like I said, I think we can get this together pretty, pretty quickly. Number, let's see, future meetings for us, I know that in your, the information that you had given me for a conclusion, Gary, you had said that we would be sort of suspending our, yeah.
That's what we've talked about the last minute.
We had talked about it, and I wasn't quite ready to put it in there, yeah, but, so, just a thought, and think about this, we don't need to meet, but if we, but obviously, if the decision comes down, a good time to meet, or if there's some major development, or just for updating, it's possible, you know, but I, yeah, but we, we, there's no dire need to meet, you know, in terms of gathering information, because we can still send, Brooke can still send information, so if someone, you know, reads a recent article that's really important, that's very helpful for us going forward, obviously, we can circulate that, so that, you know, I'd say, and feel free to email in that way, you know, to, if you find something, give it to Brooke, and then Brooke can just distribute it to everybody, you know. So, I think that works, without us shutting, you know, saying we're going to shut down totally, until, yeah, until, until the WIBI decision comes out. Okay, so we won't schedule any future meetings, except we'll work on the presentation date. Okay, any member, you know, like officially on this evening? Okay, any member, you know, except officially on this evening, but any member comments were on number eight of the agenda?
John? Any comments?
No, excellent, excellent job, excellent comments by all. It's a very extremely thorough report. Thank you all, really incredible.
I would like to make a comment. Nobody said this would be easy, this short-term rental thing, and apparently, and from all the reports from other towns, and from San Antonio, and from all these other places, it's not easy, you know, that's been demonstrated. There are a few things that I think we can't lose sight of as a town of East Line. And there's, there's simple things when you distill them. For example, in our zoning regulations, rentals are not permitted yet, as Paul's pointed out, and many of us have pointed out over a number of our meetings, rentals go back decades, we have been, people have been renting their homes for periods of time of seven days, or 30 days, or a year. You know, it makes us look either foolish or ignorant as a town. The left hand doesn't know what the right hand's doing, that would be the best. Unfortunately, the left hand does know what the right hand's doing, and we've ignored it. Businesses are not permitted in some of the districts that are zoned by the town, not counting Black Point, or Crescent Beach, or Giant's Neck, right? And yet, we have rentals that are listed in Airbnb and VRVO that are clearly businesses. Again, the right hand either doesn't know what the left hand's doing, and that's being generous, but indeed, they do, and so we look ignorant. And then again, rentals, you know, according to our zoning regulations, are not permitted, yet the tax assessor is sending out assessment forms to renters. So again, as a town, we simply are inconsistent. We don't, either don't know what one hand is doing with the other hand, or we've chosen to ignore it for all these years. I don't think we can go on that way. Thank you for your effort on this report, I think it's all-encompassing, I, I'm not quite sure if it leans left or right. I heard once that, that reports are like people, and they're young, that lean left, and as they get older, they lean right. I don't really know if that's true, my own case is clearly not true, but...
They're going to say you're still young.
Oh, you're so kind. But very, a very good report, I hope the Selectmen will take the time to read it, and I hope that we can somehow bring the town to a consistent position, so that we don't look silly, which is what we do now. So, thank you for your time, I appreciate your effort.
Thank you, thanks for your efforts as well, Greg. Anybody else?
I'd just like to say, if you would like for some of us to be there, I'd be happy to, I'd be happy to come.
Yeah, absolutely, okay, great, yeah, I mean, even if you don't want to speak...
I don't think it's necessary, but...
Oh, sure, if you, if you're here and you'd like to come, absolutely, yeah, please do, because you can also field a question, some, that's another way of, because those of you that spoke to, let's say, O-line officials, or whoever, you know, you maybe asked that question, and I'm not the one, or Gary's not the one to answer that, so, yeah, if there's a zoning issue, and what zoning says or doesn't say, you're closer to that hand than the rest of us, so, for sure. Okay, so, yeah, and, you know, thanks, everyone, for all the input and the thoughts, and, yeah, I just think we will, we will make certain revisions, you know, and just be absolutely clear about any, you know, any leaning right, left, up, down, yeah, that certainly wasn't any intention, let me tell you that. I can, after, you know, putting this together, all I can tell you is, I can, I can literally make an argument for either, either side, to the extreme, in the middle, I mean, it's just, it's an amazing issue. That being said, I just want to point out that along the way, if you, if there are some lingering, like, legal issues that you have in your head, like the issue we raised earlier this evening about beach communities that have their bylaws, but they don't have zoning, and you would like more information about that, you know, speak up, because I have a couple myself, as we're going forward, it may be that they have to be kind of researched at the time that the Supreme Court decision comes out, so it all kind of makes sense, but, you know, there's definitely a couple of these areas that are going to need fuller discussion and fuller research, so just to be sure that we're not missing something, because we do have this complexity of the beach communities with zoning, beach communities without zoning, special act communities, how they were formed, what their powers are, et cetera, et cetera, so, yeah, we have a, when I look at East Line, that's another complexity, Greg, is it's just so much more complicated than other towns, and that really stood out to me the night I went to the dinner, because I'd like to be that little town that has like, not a whole lot going on, and they can regulate so easily, you know, so, okay.
I just hope they remember when they say zoning should do this, this, and this, that, they have to supply personnel, or some kind of money to do all these enforcing things. It's not, you just can't say zoning can do that, it has to come with what you need to do it.
Yes, absolutely. So, yeah, and hopefully, this won't take forever, you know, with the Supreme Court, they'll, they'll calm down with the decision, and then we can either use it, or it doesn't apply, or it's partially applicable, and we can kind of be free of that issue, you know, it just, it's an interesting coincidence of things, and in some ways, not a bad, the timing isn't the worst, right? We could have been doing this three years ago, driven ourselves crazy, come up with something that's totally like illegal, so, or problematic, so, actually, not such bad timing, so, that's great. All right, well, I'll get back to everybody, and thanks again for your thoughts, so, and have a, enjoy your game tonight, I will watch it as well. And the solar, I must say, I know this is unrelated to, but the solar eclipse was something else today, you know, it was really nice, it was great, great to, to experience it, you know, and, because the next one's, the next one's probably, you know, beyond me here, so, but that, that's great, I hope you all got to see it. All right, well, with all that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move.
Okay, great moves.
Check it.
Second it, and aye.
Aye, aye. Thank you all.
Thank you.